Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education, with a reminder that the actions taken at this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the updated HR report, which Adrian handed out this evening?
So moved?
It's been moved by Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jeff Haseman. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to public comment. I have not been reached...
I've not yet.
Contacted. Okay. Moving on now to communications. The news letter, Janelle.
Oh, yes. We have had a great end to the school year. Lots of fun things that have happened. And one of the most exciting, of course, is commencement. And we're going to watch a quick video from our grad walk, so you can have a experience it yourself a little bit here. We were lucky enough that all of our elementaries are still very supportive of having their buildings participate in this, as you'll see in the video coming up here. So this was the halls of Hanson Elementary. And I... Every time I get to watch these videos, I am amazed at the smiles and the smiles and the smiles and miles and miles of them. Because the kids are so excited, the teachers are so excited, but the students is what is really neat. They're so excited about this. So they went back to all the six elementaries. If a student didn't actually go to elementary here in Cedar Falls, and they could just basically hop on a bus to whichever elementary they had friends going to, or if they had a sibling or a cousin in one of the buildings that they wanted to get a high five from, then they were able to do that. This video right here is at the tail end of Lincoln Elementary, when the students walked their halls. And many of the elementaries make signs for all the students. They make signs with their names, so the teachers can actually recognize them, because many of those elementary teachers have not seen these kids in years. So they are kind of in an unorganized place. So but when they have their name tags as they're walking about, they can get lots of hugs and congratulations to those students. So it's pretty neat to be able to see all of that. So we really want to thank the elementaries for being willing to participate and take the time out of their day to do it, but also the students for being willing to be a part of that, because it is right after commencement rehearsal. And I'm sure their parents want them to go do lots of other things to get ready for their parties and other stuff, but they actually take the time to get on the buses and do that. So that was really exciting to happen. Also, just wanted to do a quick congratulations to our retirees and our service recognition recipients, who had the reception for them a little while ago, and congratulations to all of them as they're finishing up their careers. And just real quick, wanted to mention, North Cedar Elementary students are really... did a lot at the end of the school year with their STEM BASS grant and working with Sidecar Coffee. That was... This was a STEM BASS grant we received in 2016, I believe. So the kind of end part of this is developing a coffee shop that will be out at North Cedar Elementary. So they're developing their own roast and learning the science and math behind all of it. And they actually went down to Sidecar and were able to roast some beans, and then they packaged them, because they sold some one-pound bags of their North Cedar blend this spring only to their families. They wanted to start out small, so they could, you know, get it right. But then eventually, those things will be able to be ordered by others in the district and in the community. So that was really exciting for them. Also, just real quick video to show a little bit of Orchard Elementary and some footage of things happening there. This is coming in from Round Street, looking to the west. And it looks like a construction site. There's a lot of... The larger part there, to the right, will be the gym to the back. I'm going to be looking at Doug and Yanni to make sure I'm not saying anything incorrect. And then this video will take a look then from the north here in a second, to look then back towards the south, I believe. And then you can see some of the addition then on the backside of the building. So that's looking south. And then all of the existing is, of course, then to the south of the addition there. Any other things to point out on that one?
No.
Moving along. Also, just wanted to give a quick congrats to our spring sports. Our girls golf placed fourth at the state meet. Our girls track had two state champions with the high jump and then in the distance medley relay. And they also placed, as a team, sixth at the state meet. Girls tennis, Kishu was seventh place individual, and then men's track was 13th place at the state meet. So congratulations to all of them. And don't forget, we still have baseball and softball happening this summer. So if anyone wants to go out and check out a game, there are lots of those games happening. Just a few upcoming events. The Pat Mitchell Golf Outing on June 21st, and the 5K Booster Club Run during Surges Falls on June 24th. You can go to the Facebook page, or just go to the cfschools.org homepage to click straight to information on registration. And both of those events support and fundraise for the Cedar Falls Booster Club, which directly impacts our students and supports them activities. Hate to say it, but we're going to look ahead and remind everyone that school will start in the fall on August 23rd, and that parents and guardians should watch their email for registration information coming late June or early July. And again, there's our e-news. We'll be sending out not quite as frequently in the summer, but if anyone wants to get on that email list, they can just send me a quick email. And we're going to be a little quieter in the summer on our social media, but we'll still be posting some things happening, because there are lots of things that still happen in the summer, just not necessarily kids and buildings. But you can also follow the building's social media as well. Any questions?
Questions for Janelle?
Thank you so much for coordinating that graduation walk. This is our second year for that, so.
Thank you, Janelle. Okay, moving on to item E, Secretary's Financial Report. Mr. Nusker.
Again, I always comment about how such a boring topic has to follow such the exciting events that happen in the school district every month. But we'll go through the monthly financials for the month of April... Or, excuse me, for May. We're quickly rolling out to the end of the school year, and just so the board knows, our pre-audit is scheduled for next week already. So while the students and the staff enjoy a slight break, the business office is hard at work trying to wrap things up. So we'll start off with the general fund here, and you can see revenue for the month was about 4.4 million, and expenditures of about 4.8, ending balance of 11.738 million, and that's very... Pretty close to where we were about a year ago. And the management fund, we had revenue of 43,000, and you can see a whole $50 worth of expenditures out of the fund for the month. And we have just a hair over a million-dollar fund balance. Take a pretty good look at that, because in July, when our property liability and auto and work comp premium comes due, that number will drop considerably. Capital Projects Fund, of course, this is the fund that we're using for the three elementary school projects. You can see that a little over $12,000 in interest for the month of May, and 1.56 million in expenditures on the three projects. We have an ending balance of just a little over $11 million. And you can see, we've done a pretty good job of chipping away at that 31 million that we originally had a year ago. So we... All three projects are moving at a nice pace, and we expect to extinguish all of the capital project fund dollars sometime this fall. One cent local option sales tax. Again, if you'll recall, last month, we received two payments in one month. So for the month of May, we only have interest to show. Expenditures very, very small, 32,000. And again, that's associated with the planning for the new, potential new high school project. And so you can see the ending fund balance of 8.7 million. We'll start drawing on that 8.7 million for the three elementary projects, again, when Fund 33 is extinguished, which should happen sometime this fall. Physical plant and equipment levy, you can see revenue of 215,000 for the month. Small expenditures, just under 35,000, as we're starting to gear up now for summer projects, and ending fund balance of about 4.3 million in that fund. Debt service, again, 148,000 for revenue. No expenditures, because our debt service payment is due June 1. That's why you see almost all of that fund balances in the cash category and not in the investments, as that payment is due on June 1st. Activity fund, pretty normal May, 136,000 in, 166 out, 555,600 for a fund balance. Trust and agency account, there you can see the activity for the month, just a little over 250,000 in the bank. Food service, again, pretty normal month for May. There'll be a little bit more of activity in June than normal, because of school rolling over into June for a few days this year. But you can see our fund balance, about 50,000 up from where we were last year at this time. And in the coffee shop fund, that this is finalized out for the year now, I believe, unless there's a late accounts payable claim that'll come in. So we have about 70... Just under $7,400 in that account. And we had one payment and one receipt come in, in the River Hills account, so we have a little over 40,000 in that. And that'll be expended out in June. And with that, I would entertain any questions for the board.
Any questions for Doug? Hearing none, then the Secretary's Financial Report will be placed on file for audit. Moving on now to item F on the agenda, the approval of the three bids. Mr. Nusker.
And that would be me again, I think. And we'll call up the food nutrition bids. There we go. We have three different bids that we would present in front of the board tonight. These are all annual requests, and I would remind the board that this is a combination of board policy and USDA requirements, why these are being brought to the board tonight. The first one is for milk for the 2018-19 school year. It's kind of weird to say 2018-19 already. But you can see, this is the typical different items that we request the dairies to bid on for those products. We use escalator pricing. We review that every year between escalator pricing and firm price. And basically, how escalator pricing works is that if the Federal Market Order Number 32 changes up or down every month, then the price that we pay for a carton of milk, or sour cream, or yogurt will up and down accordingly. It's all done by formula, so we know in advance if the market goes up a quarter per 100-pound cut weight, we know what that additional cost will be for a carton of milk, or whatever. So that's all... We have had very, very good luck doing that. We always backtrack and look at, if we'd have stayed on firm a year ago, what would we have paid out versus what we actually paid out? And for the district, it's always been a positive to be on the escalator, because typically, a firm price runs somewhere in the neighborhood of five cents per carton of milk increase. And we've never had that in the time that I've been here. So you can see, those are the quotes, and it would be our recommendation to continue to use Anderson Erickson out of Des Moines for dairy products for next school year. For the bread products, you can see the different items that we use. And I see I spelled Coneybug wrong. It's actually Coneybun. I apologize for that. And the estimated quantities that we have. And Bimble Bakeries, it would be our recommendation for this year. That's their division of Sarah Lee, by the way, out of Dubuque. And we base that recommendation on the total estimated quantity that we're going to use. So basically, it's the $1.40 times 2,000 plus the $1.39, you know, that sort of thing. And so when you do the math, it figures out that a firm out of Dubuque would be our recommendation for that. And then the third item that we have this year for you is supply bids. This is primarily paper supplies, but it also is napkins and cups and all sorts of different items that the food service operation uses. We have, I believe, five or six different vendors submitted bids. This is a summary of those bids, and you can see the recommendations on the screen. Pretty much a standard product, processes the past. Little bit more on this one, simply because we're opening up a seventh kitchen, or a new kitchen, excuse me, this fall, and so we needed a few extra supplies to get that kitchen up and running. And with that, I'd entertain any questions from the board on these bids.
Any questions regarding the three bids? If not, I have a motion.
I move to approve the recommendations for the 2018-19 school year nutrition fund bids as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. I'm thinking you're up next again. Approval of the property loss transfer report.
In your board packet, there is a request. This is going to become an annual request to transfer dollars from the management fund to either the Pebble Fund or the general fund. And this is a direct result of deductibles that we had for various property loss events that took place over the course of the school year. And you can see that the total amount of the deductions, or the request to transfer is $21,748.15. And basically, what this does is by code and by recommendation from the Iowa Department of Education, we pay for those expenses out of the original fund, and then at the end of the year, the board... We request the board to transfer the deductible part of those items from the management fund to those appropriate funds. A classic example, for property loss, we have a $5,000 deductible, and we do run a $250 deductible on auto.
Do I have a motion to approve the property loss transfer report?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors approve the transfer of $20,448.20 to the physical plant and equipment levy, and $1,299.95 to the general fund from the management fund for property loss deductible costs incurred during the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jenny. Any questions or comments for Doug?
I was just curious, being new to the board, like, is this a typical year in terms of property loss? Is this kind of more than normal? Is it...
This is very similar to last year.
Similar.
A little bit more in general fund, because I think general fund last year was less than 1,000. But on the Pebble Fund, it's pretty typical. Nothing unusual this year.
You know, there's some years you can have a pretty big claim with, there's a water main that breaks inside, but this year, again, it was fairly reasonable with some of the repairs that we've had, or issues that we've had.
The weight room floor looked expensive.
That was the largest one that we had this year, and that was a water main breakage for a water fountain.
I wondered about the laptops that were stolen. Did that happen on school property, or was that laptops that had been taken?
That's included in this, yes.
Yeah, I know. I just wonder if they were stolen from school property, or if they were laptops that had been taken home?
We'd have to go back and look at that. I don't know the exact details or remember the exact details. Typically, when something like that happens, it's out of a vehicle, off-site. So we just have to go back and figure out specifically when and what.
All right. Let's vote on this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Again, now, item H on the agenda, approval of the district telephone equipment upgrade purchases. Mr. Nusker.
That would be me again, and we have a display or a screen to talk about this as well. This has been a project that the district has been working on now for a couple of school years, knowing that with Aldrich Elementary opening up in the fall, we were going to have to expand our telephone system. We had our IT staff take a serious look at our current system. And you can see that our current system was installed back in 2003 and 2004. And we have been experiencing some functionality issues with that over the last few years, due primarily to the age of the telephone handsets and the ability to find replacement. The IT team has been doing a wonderful job of buying handsets on eBay, because you haven't been able to buy a new handset since 2010, because they've been discontinued. And then also, the manufacturer of our telephone system has discontinued any and all service and support for the handsets, as well as the operating system for that handset, and that took place in 2015. So we've been sort of limping along, waiting for Aldrich to open up, and we've had significant issues with handsets failing. We've had some issues with voicemail, that sort of thing. Right now, as an example, I would dial into my voicemail, and it might be 15 to 30 seconds before it asks me to punch in my password. So we've just been continuing to have some issues with that. You can see that we've also had some problems with conference calling, but from a life safety perspective, to notify the fire department or notify our security company if an alarm goes off, all that signal has to be converted from digital to analog. And we can make it work, but it's sort of an antiquated way of having to go about doing that. So what we have done is, like I said, IT had, for the last couple of years, has been reviewing different telephone manufacturers. They have visited firms that have a system similar to ours or other systems that we were looking at, to find out how that functionality was working. And by when I mean firms, I should have said school districts. We've gone to... They've gone up into Minnesota, visited Iowa schools, Wisconsin schools, that sort of thing, to find out their systems, what they've been using. Of course, we looked at our current manufacturer as well, but the decision of the IT staff has been to switch from Cisco to Digium telephone system. And you can see some of the reasons why on the screen. High-definition voice communication, ease of use, and 24/7 text support. And I will be very honest, cost was a factor in all this, because Cisco was quite a bit more expensive from a maintenance and software agreement perspective, not necessarily the hardware perspective of that. For those of you that may have remembered about, right before we came down to the city hall to start doing board meetings, we had a board meeting in the old boardroom, and we had a telephone set up in that room for a conference call that night. That was a Digium phone. So if you'll recall that or remember that, that happened to be the night we were testing that system out, so to kind of give you an idea of how that worked. So we... Once we made the decision that we were going to switch to that particular brand, this is the list of equipment that we needed. 726 phones of various capacity, 990 user subscriptions. Now, you might wonder why so many? Well, we have to have one user subscription for every port that goes out for the fire alarm, for the security alarm. All those things also have to have an individual port, which means you have to have a subscription for it. That's a one-time purchase. And of course, then you have to have the operating system, and then you have to have the PRI, or otherwise known as the Voice Over IP Gateway, to do all the conversion, to operate the same system that we currently have. And this list is a sufficient amount of equipment to do the entire district, including Aldrich Elementary, as well as additional classrooms that'll open up at North Cedar and Orchard when those buildings are completed. And the system also has plenty of room for future growth from the server end of things. So we've got the software and everything in place as we... If we think about a new high school down the road, we think about those sorts of things. We're all set and ready to go for that. We have three different firms that have submitted quotes for us on the hardware end of it, and it would be our recommendation of IT to accept a quote from Presidio out of Edina, Minnesota, and that amount is $140,850. And that is... Payment would come out of the 2018-19 physical plant and equipment levy, and this is a part of the 10-year Pebble Master Plan expenditure.
We originally had this set up over a two-year period. We were going to do the secondary buildings one year, the elementary buildings the alternative year. But when we looked at the scope and the return on investment and the price to split that over two years, we had set, again, aside 100,000 per year to do that. So the $200,000, doing it in one fell swoop, actually cut the cost down to make it much more efficient in price.
And we also did run a pilot with the administration building. Some of us in the administration building were on the new system, and one of the other buildings in the district was on the new system. And there was a connectivity error between the Cisco system and the Digium system. They didn't always want to talk nice to each other. And so that was another reason why we decided to delay the two-year implementation and do it all at once.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the district telephone equipment upgrade purchase?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Directors approve the bid from Presidio Inc., Edina, Minnesota, for telephone equipment as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments?
How... So I see we get one year of basically support. So after that runs off, usually these companies have a... You end up paying a maintenance fee to maintain your license and everything else. How does that license with the new system compare with the license that we've continued to pay for and support for the existing Cisco system?
It's less. That's basically what I can tell you. And with the Digium system, it's more open market or...
Open source?
Yeah, open source, excuse me. A system where the Cisco is all very proprietary, and we don't have to worry about if the... If, for whatever reason, we don't make a maintenance payment on time, the system gets shut off, because now Cisco has that capability. That's one of the reasons why we've switched on the computer network equipment. If you recall, a year ago, we switched from Cisco to HP. That was a factor in the decision-making. The IT staff's very high on this system. The firm that we're using, that's going to do the install for us, they'll set up all of these server and all the setup in the backend. So when the actual equipment rolls in, basically, our IT staff basically has to take the phone out of the... Program it, and say it's going to be in this room and this site and this extension, boom, and it's in. So from the IT staff perspective, install is fairly straightforward. A lot of the other work's done on the backend of it, so. And we get full support from this firm, and we have a guaranteed not-to-exceed amount on the install part as well, so.
Yeah. Well, the install comes out of the Pebble, but that ongoing maintenance fee comes out of the general fund.
And that can also come out of Pebble.
Oh, that can also come out of Pebble?
Yes, and it will.
Excellent.
And it has in the past. There was a FAQ and some guidance from the Department of Ed a couple of years ago in maintenance contracts that are not instructional in nature can come out of Pebble. An example for that would be if we have a maintenance contract for Excel and Word, that would have to come out of the general fund, because that would be considered instructional. But Power School, this sort of thing, our financial accounting software package, the maintenance contract that we pay for the phone calls when we make a... When we do the texts and the calls out for school running late or whatever, that's all Pebble-eligible, and we leverage that.
Okay. Excellent.
Good questions. Any other questions?
Is any of this eligible for E-rate funding discounts?
Telephone, no. When we talk about the networking a little bit, yes.
Good. Let's vote on this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Doug. Are you on again? Turn the page. Okay, approval of the secondary Chromebook bid. And Doug?
That would be me again, if I can push the right button here. There we go. Okay, last month, we came to the board, and we... The board agreed to purchase Chromebooks for the elementary schools this year. This meeting, we're talking about secondary schools. Again, it's the same model Chromebook that we're purchasing for the elementary students. This time, we only received three quotes instead of four. B&amp;H chose not to quote this time. And you can see that we're asking for 850 devices, and the low quote is from Erbs Technology out of Cedar Rapids, again, at $183,600. Erbs is a good firm to work with. I understand that our elementary Chromebooks are shipping this week, and so the secondary one should come right after the 1st of July, which times out really well with my budget. And we hope to have those up and running and start handing them out right after classes start in September. Again, I would remind you that $850 means that every 7th grader and 10th grader will be getting a new Chromebook this year. That's the plan, and a few spares as necessary.
And this is part of our 10-year physical plant and equipment levy plan to refresh those 7th and 10th grader laptops every year, so they have them for the next three years in that building.
And also a part of the tech plan that the board recently saw last month.
Correct.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the secondary Chromebook bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the secondary Chromebook purchase from Erbs Technology, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of $183,600 as presented.
Thank you, Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Jeff Orbis. Any questions or comments?
So is the per-unit price on this the same as the previous... Okay. And then just a question, just from a kind of a procedural... Why do we do... And then, just a question, just from a, kind of a procedural, why do we do two, one for secondary and one, instead of, I'm just thinking from a, from a bidding, if you put it all together, you know, I don't know if we get any better pricing or not, but...
Two reasons. One, budget and the right fiscal year. And remember, I had that little problem last year, and we had to do an amendment for that. And two is timing for the IT staff to, in order to do the work. By getting the Chromebooks for the elementaries, and now they can have those set up and ready to go by the time school starts. But the secondary is, they're going to work on those after classes start in the fall. We have a brand-new elementary we need to open up, and we've got a few technology items we need to get installed there before classes start in August. So that's, it's a timing thing. But the pricing per unit was the same.
And that's one of the benefits, just the number that we purchase. There's educational cost analysis and numbers that they provide for, so we know it's not going to fluctuate a lot. One of our surprises is that Herbs can sell them to us as inexpensively as they do when you look at the cost and how low they are below the other two bidders. So we're happy with that, and it's an Iowa firm, but it's unique that we can get them at the price that we get them. And again, I didn't do the math this time, I did it last time, but I think it comes like $217 per unit, and that's really inexpensive, especially compared to what we paid when we first started this about five years ago. They've just been going down, down, and down, which is very beneficial.
Another quick question. We recycle these? So our seniors, what happens? I mean, they aren't pretty after three years.
Well, some are.
All of them? Some are, some are, some are.
Typically, what we do is we'll take the ones that we have that are being cycled out of distribution at the secondary level, and any of those that are refurbished, it's another job that our IT department does during the summer. They'll go through them, they'll check them in if there's any fines or fees associated with those, those will be levied. But then the ones that are suitable to still be used, typically, we'll use those down at the elementaries for additional spares or try to put them together for additional classroom sets. Because the model was to be two to one at the elementary with our Chromebooks. We are now virtually one to one in all those different areas because of the ones that we purchased with the elementary, but also then the ones that we try to recycle back through that system. Typically, after three years, they will tell you that they're not very usable, so we are very selective on which ones are.
But I can also tell you that we still have some Samsung ones the first year that we did this, still being used at the elementary schools. And those are the units that are going to get cycled out this summer. And the IT will go through those, and those that are salvageable, they'll salvage for spares, and those that are not will be taken care of. Appropriately recycled would probably be the best way to describe it.
Thank you. Good. And any other questions or comments for Doug or Andy? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item J on the agenda is the approval of the district technology equipment bid. Mr. Nesker.
And it's my turn again. Oh, my. We have the technology equipment purchase items on the list. This is the second year of a two-year phase-in to completely swap out all of the network router switches, hubs, Wi-Fi radios, and everything else that need, we need to do to make our network throughout the district as robust as possible and operate as efficiently as possible. The equipment on this year's bid are primarily for Aldrich, North Cedar, and Orchard Hill Elementaries, although there will be selected pieces that'll be set, placed throughout the district. And again, the equipment is a part of the technology network upgrade plan, and that was included in the 10-year master plan. And you can see in May of 2017, we purchased a pretty significant amount of equipment that covered most of the buildings within the district. So this is the list of equipment that we're needing for the rest, for the three buildings that I mentioned. It's amazing what they get for a 44-port managed switch. You're talking, in essence, of $3,500 apiece. So, and that's, that's after discount, so it tacks up pretty quickly. But we, last year, we switched over. We've been migrating away from Cisco and moving towards HP or Aruba, which is, Aruba's a subsidiary of HP. And we've had just extremely good luck. Our IT staff's been very happy with that switch. They had done a lot of research about that before we made that recommendation a year ago, and they want to continue with that. Here are the four quotes that we received, and I want to make a note that the quote on the far right bet us, there were eight particular items that they chose, for whatever reason, not to quote, and they may not have had a full availability to everything that we had on our bid list. And while that number is less, it also is, eight items on that list were not included. And like I said, when you're looking at a managed switch at $3,300 a pop, and it doesn't take very long for that, for you to see that CDW did have the best value associated with this quote. And to Jeff's question, approximately 25% of that amount is E-Rate eligible this year? This is going to be the last year, as we're being told, for E-Rate for the district. We used to use E-Rate for quite a number of years to offset Internet and telephone costs. That has, that, last year, that switched to hardware, and for this year, as well as it's for hardware, but the consultants at the AEA and Department of Ed are basically telling us this is going to be the last year. So it would be our recommendation to purchase the rest of our technology equipment from CDW-G out of Vernon Hills, Illinois, at a net cost of $186,669 after rebate discount. And what the board will experience when that bill rolls in, you'll see the bill for the full 244.6, and then we apply for the rebate. We've been told we will get it, but you have to go through the paperwork process, and then approximately four to six months later, we'll get a check for the 57.9 to offset it.
Okay.
Within our 10-year plan, we had this in two separate line items. One is an annual expense for upgrading some of our network. Then we also had two consecutive years where we knew we'd be going through a major upgrade to our system, so there's a line item for this year for $200,000. So we had budgeted $300,000 for this year. You could see some of the bids where they came in at, but we are under budget and under what we proposed for this cost.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the district technology equipment bid?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board of Directors approve the bid from CDW-G Vernon Hills, Illinois, for the network equipment as presented.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Eric. Any questions or comments regarding the equipment bid?
I think we'd be remiss without saying thank you to CFU. They provide the large gig service into our system, and it's one of those aspects where it's a huge blessing for us, but it also means that we needed to make sure that we had our switches and routers and all the other hardware behind the scenes up to speed to be able to capitalize on that high bandwidth that we are receiving as a district.
Thank you for saying that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're off the hook here, Doug. Moving on now to the approval of 2018-2019 CFEA base wage contract. Dr. Talbot.
Proposed agreement with the Cedar Falls Education Association. A tentative agreement has been reached on a contract to cover a one-year period, July 1, 2018 through June 30 of 2019, on base wages, wages, credit for experience, and educational lanes, and a two-year period, July 1, 2018 through June 30 of 2020, on all other language. This tentative agreement has been ratified by CFEA members. Specifically, on economic items, a $0 increase to the 2017-18 BA Step 1 Base Wage Generator on the Basic Salary Schedule, step advancement, and lane changes for those employees who meet the requirements. Language items, retain in part or in entirety the following permissive language: association leave, service year, leaves of absence, sick leave, bank, grievance procedure. The recommendation is that the step advancement wage settlement, including FICA and IPIs, is 2.25%, and we recommend acceptance of this tentative agreement.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I have a motion to approve the CFE base wage contract from anyone?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jeff Haseman. Any questions or comments regarding the CFEA base wage contract?
I think item of note down below, you'll see within the recommendation that there is some changes with the insurance plan, so the total package, we don't do total package necessarily anymore, but it's something that everybody's used to, comes out to 1.88%. And I think that's important to note as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item L, the approval of the 2018-2019 Teamster base wage contract. Dr. Talbot.
Proposed agreement with Teamsters Local 138. Tentative agreement was reached on May 17, 2018, at mediation on a contract to cover a one-year period, July 1, 2018 through June 30 of 2019, on base wages, and a two-year period, July 1, 2018 through June 30 of 2020, on language. This tentative agreement has been ratified by Teamsters members. Specifically, the base wage increase, 25 cents per hour to be added to each classification except Classification 6, a 40 cent an hour increase for Classification 6, a wage increase for returning employees of 35 cents per hour for all classifications, a change in job classification. The mail delivery driver, Classification 2, job will move to delivery driver grounds helper, Classification 3. The total dollar increase in wages, FICA and IPIs, is 2.64%, and we recommend acceptance of this agreement.
All right. Do I have a motion from anyone to approve the Teamsters contract?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jenny. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Sasha. Any questions or comments?
Just the additional notes, where, when, at the bottom, with the insurance and contribution levels for the total package, again, which we don't typically calculate anymore, but it's what people are used to, is a 1.57.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item M, the approval of supervisors, managers, coordinators, transportation department, ID department, technicians, and a 12-month clerical 2018-2019 salary benefit adjustment. Dr. Talbot.
We recommend an average total package, which is wages plus insurance premiums, IPIs and FICA, increase of 1.64% of employee contribution to monthly single insurance premiums for the Select 2 Plan to increase from $25 per month to a range from $30 to $50 per month, with the new Select 2 deductible increasing from $250 to $750. Employees in the group to which this recommendation applies are 12-month secretarial clerical, information technology service technicians, bus garage mechanics, bus drivers, coordinators, managers, and supervisors. Suggests, as Dr. Paty has referenced in the prior two recommendations, for the board's benefit comparing total package settlements, the total package settlement for CFEA was 1.88, the Teamsters agreement total package was 1.57, and the total package settlement for the specific group to which I am now speaking is 1.64.
Thank you, Dr. Talbot. Do I have a motion to approve the salary and wage changes for the non-bargaining unit employees?
So moved.
It's been moved by Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Jeff Orbis. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to item N on the agenda, the approval of the 2018-2019 administrative team salary slash benefit adjustment. Dr. Paty.
Yes, and this is for administrators and directors that are part of the cabinet minus the superintendent. And I'm going to read it as it is written within the board packet for everybody, because I think it's important that the context is certainly understood. And this is due to the very low 1% increase in supplemental state aid for the 1819 school year. It's been tough when we look at the budget and what's been provided to us from the legislative level, certainly as we look at how do we make sure that we handle the growth that we're having as a district and manage in the right way, but also balance that with the needs that we have across the district when it comes to programs and expenditures and increasing costs for all the things that we do educationally. So due to that low increase, that 1% supplemental state aid for the 1819 school year, it is my recommendation to make no adjustments in administrative, again, minus the superintendent, which the recommendation is for zero when we get to that, but that's not in this part, salaries for next school year. This will be an overall group salary increase of zero. All administrators' monthly contribution will be switched to the new Select 750 Health Insurance Plan at $70 per month. Total package increase, including IPIs and insurance benefits, is 0.64% for the administrative team. And we've talked about this administratively now, going on probably two to three months, and this is something that we know is an important step, an important component, especially as we face a challenging year.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2018-2019 administrative team salary benefit adjustment?
So moved.
It's been moved by Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jenny. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to now the issuance of contracts and letters of agreement. Mr. Nesker.
What we need from the board tonight is a motion to allow the district to issue contracts to all of our employee groups, with the exception of the superintendent, for next school year. This is an addition or a new agenda item that the board's not seen before. It is a recommendation from the Department of Education and the State Auditor's Office to include this in, as an annual request. Typically, we've done that in the past. Once the board has approved a benefit adjustment or salary adjustment, we've just gone ahead and done it. But the Auditor's Office and DEA are recommending that we have this one additional step.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion for the approval of the letters of assignment.
Cedar Falls, I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education authorizes the board secretary to issue individual contracts or letters of assignment for 2018-2019 school year employees, including use of the board president's signature stamp as necessary.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
This is something I talked to Joyce about as well and Jeff, but this is, again, as Doug said, a new requirement, guidance, I guess, is the best way to describe it, to ensure that we're legal and make sure that everything is up to speed as far as a district. We want to make sure that we can get contracts out as quickly as we can, so everybody can feel comfort with where we're at, so new step, but certainly a step that at least makes us feel a little bit better with the guidance from the DE as well as the Auditor's Office.
All right. Any questions or comments, others? All right. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to the approval of authorization of payment for end-of-year claims.
And that would be me again. This is an annual request to the board, even at the June board meeting, and that is a request to have the board allow the business office to pay those claims that should be paid in the 2017-18 school year before the end of June. Obviously, the board will see all of those claims at its next board meeting or first board meeting in July, and those, we will go through the normal audit process like we normally have, but it's just a way for us to try and clean up end-of-year obligations that we have for bills that come in late that haven't made the board meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the authorization of payment?
I move...
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District give authorization to the Director of Business Affairs for the payment of year-end claims before board approval. Listing of year-end claims will be submitted to the board at the first school board meeting of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Suzie. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
The business office, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments or concerns from board members?
I would just like to acknowledge all of the work that went into the agreements that we just approved this evening, and the sacrifices that everybody is making in tough fiscal situations. Thank you. Thank you for that work, and thank you for your sacrifices.
Thank you, Sasha.
I would be remiss to saying that, really. Everyone out there, I felt, was willing to talk about the difficulties the district was having from both sides, so I thank both sides of the table for being willing to work together to come to some sort of commonality so that we can have a contract in place where needed, so we can move forward educating kids in our district, so thanks. Thank you all for being a part of that.
Other than that, do I, any other questions or comments? Okay, Jeff, I'm.
Yeah, no, I'd, and this isn't any from, for some reason, and I'm sure it's just a coincidence, I've gotten a couple of questions just about security in the school, and obviously, you know, there's just a concern on that, and I think we had like a, at the high school level, wasn't a group of students that came together and said, hey, what can we do? Have we, has that also occurred at the junior high level as well on a?
Different buildings, different needs. At the junior highs, everybody has to come in, there's only one door that's unlocked during the school day. All visitors have to come to the office, check into the office before they can access the building. That's true and will be true in all of our elementaries post renovations, post construction work. We still have some elementaries now that don't have that, but that will be rectified when everything's done. Our high school is unique. There are, I think, 15 to 18 open doors throughout the day or have been. After some of the recent events, especially the event down in Florida a few months ago, we had students and staff that came forward and said, what do we do proactively to try to secure the building more during the day? And they came up with a plan, and the doors are locked, but during passing periods, we have staff members that are either coming or going from planning periods that are assigned to different doors. They open up those doors so students can come and go, because our high school is not set up where you cannot avoid going outside sometime during the day because of where some of our classes are held, they're held in separate annexes, or just the timing is impossible to go from one side of the building to another side with our internal passageways, because it's been added on to and so discombobulated at times within the hallways. So we've really focused on that and really tried to be mindful with what the solution would be from a whole holistic approach, from a group approach, but it's challenging at our high school.
Any other questions or comments?
In the next couple of weeks, with Sturgis coming up, we have volunteer opportunities. So if you have time available, I'm sure I can plug you in to an excellent opportunity.
All right. Moving on to item R on the agenda. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education enter into closed session to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session, 2011 Code of Iowa 21.51I.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Suzie. We'll need a roll call vote.
We'll need a roll call vote. Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Giddens?
Yes.
Mr. Haseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Mr. Orvis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wolpert?
Yes.
Okay, I would ask everybody associated with this, not associated with this meeting, please leave the room. For the viewing public, this will conclude our telecast. At the conclusion of the board closed session, we will come back on open session with one agenda item that is to adjourn. Thank you.